Meeting the order. Y'all ready? We're gonna call the meeting the orders to regular session seven eleven two thousand twenty-two. And we're gonna call for a moment of silent prayer. We'll do the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, under God, in the heavens and on earth.
All right, first thing we need to do is approve the agenda. We got, what do we need to add?
Basically, what that is, is Andy had talked to me and Mr. Allen had talked to me about some mowers. There's a bid for mower tractor, just want y'all to review it. He said that the mowers that they got, they can hardly well. And the other one was the, it ended to be late Friday from the lawyer, the road ordinance. I just need to approve it. He put his resolution on top.
Hey, we need to add, we need to go to closed session personnel leaving, would you tell them?
I ain't told him yet.
All right.
Closed session for personnel reason.
All right, with those additions, anything else? If not, with those additions, we need a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion to approve?
Second. All right, I'll vote in favor of it also. Motion carried the approval of the minutes, regular session, and the public meeting.
The floss.
It was five nine was a regular session, and the other public meeting was seven one. So y'all wanna make a motion to approve both of them at once?
Yeah, I made motion to approve both of them at one time.
No, yeah, the motion's second, and I'm gonna vote in favor of it also. So that's, motion's carried. The accounts payable, any questions on that? If not, we need a motion to approve it.
Make a motion to approve?
Second. All right, I'll vote in favor of it also. The financial report, any questions on that? All right, need a motion to approve it.
Motion to approve?
Second. All right, I'll vote in favor of it also. On the appearances, we got Keith Bowen. And his elections update, what, Keith, you wanna, you've got some questions for us, or you just wanna tell us something?
I just got you a little bit of information as to Keith. I took a few months off trying to get all the crops in the ground, so I finally got all that. Kinda sorta took care of it, come back and in touch, basically, y'all. I know we haven't made any decisions yet on about the paper ballots. But I just wanted to let y'all know a few things that's went on since we've talked. I don't know if y'all know where y'all probably are. But like I mentioned earlier, this is not a Democrat or Republican thing, this is straight voting, integrity thing, what we got going on. And in DeKalb County, at the primary on May the twenty-fourth, whenever it was, they had a, it was a Democrat county chairman, this position y'all were in, they had a bunch of folks running for her. Wound up, lady wound up in third place, so she didn't make the runoff. She got looking in, in her home precinct where her and her husband reside, she didn't get any votes. So she went, say, hey, wait a minute, something's up here. So she got looking and started doing the recount, and it winds up, she was in third, and when they counted it, with all the craziness that went on, she was actually in first place. So she's in a runoff with the person that was in second place, and the guy was in first, is third. And those are kinda things that we want to try to avoid with Miller County, with things that, and I'll give you an update with several other things that's went on. And one of the counties that showed where, in Rappersburg, where he won the primary, they said he had sixty-eight percent of the vote when they did a recount, it looked like he still won, but it was fifty-three percent of the vote. So there's things like that, that's not building evidence, confidence in our electoral system have now.
Situation you just talked about, I ain't really got time to read this, is that in here?
It is. The DeKalb County one is in there. It was several thousands votes, it was, I think like fifteen hundred votes, it was taken away from her and divided up between other people. That the machines did that. They said it was a coding issue in the machines and this kinda stuff like that. And it could have been, I'm not saying it was any kinda nefarious thing. But what I'm saying is, we've got to get our confidence built back into our system. And I talked with Judge Joss earlier today, they have some stuff going on that he can't talk about right now. But we're still, we're not giving up on the paper ballot. And I just want y'all to know, we're still pushing that issue, I'm not saying it'll happen before June, or it'll happen before November, or it'll happen before twenty twenty-four. But it's just something that we, I'm gonna keep coming back every, so when something comes up, I'm gonna keep coming back and keep, I don't like to use the word hounding y'all, but keep bringing it to attention.
Just keep it in the line.
That's very good. Keep it up the front, we're gonna keep thinking about it. And Miller County is a perfect place to do, we have one precinct, we ain't got a bunch of other precincts you have to involve in. We got one precinct, it'd be an awesome place to try it out for a test drive. So y'all have any questions or comments that y'all might, would like to address?
Not right off the top of my head, I mean, I'm gonna, I'm gonna read this right here, and I might see something in here that I wanna call you, that you may have more knowledge of than this right here.
Okay.
Let's on with, but anyway, we appreciate you coming and keep us updated. I mean, that's, that's not a problem, you coming up here like that, right there. I think everybody appreciates what you're trying to do and all, and I think they interested in it all, so, you know, they wanna know, like, things like this right here. They probably have heard some of it on the news, but anyway.
Sometimes you don't know what to believe and what to believe.
Anything you keep us updated, we're, we're welcome.
Well, it's, it's, the problem is that people are losing confidence in the election system, that's what I'm getting to. If we can get it to where, well, I don't believe it, and then you can go and you can count paper ballots, and this is how many, without that QR code on it, and it all boils back to that QR code. That's the whole thing, that QR code is what really throws everything else out. But like I say, I'm gonna beat a dead horse, thank y'all for your time, if y'all have any questions, just give me a call, and I'll try to get some information for y'all.
All right, we thank you.
Thank you.
All right, on the next appearance, we get Sharon Helm, she not here?
Yeah, she hasn't.
Okay. Is there anything we need to discuss about this? Or she just gonna update us on, we're gonna wait on her to talk to it, is she coming back?
She mainly just wanted to let you know that she's going to go, or they've already gone to the ones that have, they were national, that wanted to keep it, so they could go and pay it themselves, and so they'll talk to their employees, and the ones that wanna keep it, they got their information so they can pay it. The ones that didn't, we're gonna do it.
Before we go, I mean, I jumped to the Sharon Helm's thing, but anyway, was, was you needing to talk to us about anything, Josh? Were you just here to answer any questions?
I was here if there was questions about that, and about the t sploss. I didn't know y'all, anything I had to do with that.
Okay. All right, old, next thing's old business, it's a fuel station report. Is everybody satisfied with that? Does it look like it's doing what we wanted to do? I mean, I think what we coming at now is, is, is starting to turn, we're not lose, put it like this, we're not losing any money on the thing. So it's, it's doing what it's supposed to do, I believe. And from what Doug, from what we're seeing, and what Doug telling us, he's staying on top of it pretty good. I think it was a good move, because we're not, we're doing, we're doing okay with it. Any questions on that? All right, GPS program, that's page forty-six.
What, basically, I'm waiting on ACCG to give me some policies that we can put in place for this open record request, so. And then I got two companies that I've talked to, that's, that's basically don't probably fit what we're looking for. We just don't, we don't wanna monitor ourselves, so that's where we are. Whenever I get some more information, I'll bring it back to you.
Okay. All right, next thing, something we already talked about a little bit, and it's underway, it's the most greater plan.
Andy said that he was gonna try to be here tonight.
Andy said that he was gonna try to be here tonight, but his daddy had surgery Friday, and he said he wasn't doing the best, so he may not make it. So, I guess he'll update you on the next one.
Is there any, any questions, or anything you need to tell us about that right there, that we don't already know? We, I mean, this, they're parking things, and, and there's a plan in place that this, it may need tweaking some kinda way. But I think unless y'all, y'all got anything to add to it, I think we're okay with that right now. The library letter, page forty-eight, fifty. They're asking, and I guess that's the same amount that they've been asking for in the past.
Yeah, they're a hundred ballots, and strange.
They're going, they're going to a hundred nineteen.
So, they want nineteen more?
Yeah, nineteen.
And they're their own line, so I don't know how that affects.
Well, we, we ain't adopted the budget yet, we're gonna work all that, we'll finalize that. So, we just, unless y'all wanna discuss anything on it, we can put that on hold for now. And when we go finalize the budget, we'll discuss that. Alright, spending resolution, page fifty-one, fifty-two. That's to operate, we do this every year.
We need a motion to do that?
Yes, we, we operating on twenty twenty-one budget until we adopt twenty twenty-two budget. Okay, alright, yes, we need a motion to, to adopt this spending resolution.
I make a motion to adopt this spending resolution?
Second, and I'll vote in favor of it also. Alright, beer and wine license approval, that's page fifty-three through fifty-six. I think it's just, is one of them, just one of them dropped off, or?
Uh, he's the only one that we have. One of my guests, he said shut the store down, and the other one just decided not to renew.
Alright.
Probably gonna be the sheriff's office, he signed off on it.
I'll make a motion to approve it. This is Dennis Chambers, yeah, yeah.
Second.
The name of the place, Quick's Place, got a motion to second, I'll vote in favor of it also. Alright, motion's carried, the T-splosh. The renewal resolution, we talked with Mr. Mills about that, county attorney. We got T-splosh renewal resolution and lost certificate of renewal.
So, on the T-splosh, he wanted you guys to look that over and make sure that's how, how you wanted it. And then we would go, I guess he's gonna wait on what the city says tomorrow, then, then we'll sign off on that.
So, do we need to wait till the city signs up? So, we ain't gotta do anything just right now?
No, I mean, unless you want to, and just, if you think that's, that's how he had it, he just changed the dates, he just put up, you know, he typed in.
We can do this next month, and it'll be plenty of time to get it.
Yeah, I think it's by the end of the year, before, before the, what the lost is, but this, we've got to go ahead and, and we've got to get it off the ballot.
So, the next, yeah, so the next one.
If you guys wanna, I mean, it's the same thing that you have.
Yeah, we still have time, right?
We'll, we'll, we'll have to sign it twice, you know, because.
Page sixty, that's how it's gonna appear on the ballot, right there. In that, that block right there. And that's basically the same thing, I mean, it is the same thing that it was before. And unless y'all see any need to change anything, then I think we need to just go ahead and approve, approve the thing. Unless there's some, something that comes up, that we have to revisit this.
I'll make a motion, we'll approve it, and we need to make sure the people know where their money being spent.
Second.
You know, we need to do a little bit of publicity on it, if it's legal, let's put it that way.
Well, city's got a sign on their part, and Andy talked about, me and him talked about this before, city's got a sign down there showing what road, what this, this money coming in has accomplished. And it is sort on the city's part, what they did, but out there on the Bellevue Road, there was some temporary signs put up, we need a permanent sign. Somewhere there, probably at the beginning of the county line, where the city limits cuts off, and one at the other end of it. Do y'all wanna do that?
Yes, absolutely, we need to let people know what it being used for. Because without it, we, we, we're gonna be embarrassing.
Alright, Doug, you can try to get us some wording for a sign like that, the city, I don't remember exactly how it's worded, it says, this is your tax dollars.
Yeah, I, I spoke to Shelley and Andy about, about the metal signs. We just need to know what department it's gonna be paid out of, and we can go ahead and get it approved. That's whatever, whatever comes up.
I mean, signing could cost that much, you ain't talking about, probably a hundred dollars.
Pay them out of road for it, to go there.
How many, how many do you think we're gonna need?
We just need one at the beginning of the Bellevue Road.
I'd say one at the end.
And one at the county, where the city limit starts.
And then you need one on Mutton Road out there also, because that was the surface of all the road, y'all. The roads have been, the work has been done since the T-splosh. You need to sign one for people to, enterprise road, all that, people need to know that that's what. So, we go out of town to buy something, we pay in the, you know, there, there's T-splosh and stuff. So, people need to realize, all these people coming through here, wanting to beat yourself there stopping, they're paying to help us.
Alright, I'll give it that, we'll give it that.
Obviously, you're talking about a total of probably four signs. Is that right?
Probably no more than that.
Two on the Bellevue Road, two on the Mutton Road.
And you got Enterprise.
Enterprise Road, we have six signs in.
And you got about eight.
I'd get two extras, isn't that, we're gonna keep doing stuff right now.
And, and, hey, we're, we're gonna give you a small motion.
Alright, now.
And the lost certificate, you just need to sign off on that, that's, that's the figures based on what we talked about with the population. So, we just need to sign that, and, and go ahead and get the city to sign it, and then turn that in.
And the motion we just made about the T-splosh, did that motion, it covered the, the T-splosh?
It needs to be separate.
Alright, we need, we, we covered the T-splosh. Next motion we need is a motion to continue to, to renew this certificate for the lost money.
That's the current population.
Yep, and the percentage of it would be based on the population, alright, need a motion on that.
I make a motion for the lost.
Second, and I'll vote in favor of it also, so the motion's carried. Any more discussion on T-splosh or the lost? Next thing we got, is the damage to irrigation pipe, that's page seventy-five, seventy-eight. Some pictures in there. Lady, you swing over there, is that in your district?
I am.
Tell us about it.
So, this is a pipe that was buried, this, I don't even know who, I don't know whose property it is, but Israel Houston, and Jason Houston, Greg Houston. And it was buried there, they said when they was in high school, so thirty years ago. And they had it marked right there, but, you know, not too, not too good.
Yeah, it's got signs on it, because that was one of the things, we've done it before, they had to keep signs on it. You know, you see a metal pipe out of one side, I mean, excuse the metal star, but it definitely was not marking the other side, just covered it.
It kinda, it kinda growed up too, looks like a little bit, you know.
I was gonna go out there, and I ain't been working.
It was, it wasn't buried, it wasn't four foot, I don't know how it was supposed to be buried. But it, you know, like I said, it's been out there thirty years, since nineties, so twenty-five years.
What, other than the pipe, I mean, what?
So, he was gonna get, he was gonna get somebody to install that pipe, and they were going to bury it no less than four feet under the ground. And so, he just wanted, he wanna know where we helped, with a little bit of the installation, just, I guess it's.
I spoke to Andy, and he, he said that he'd be more than welcome to help do it. He said he knows how to put pipe in, and he thinks he's done it with irrigation, and I said, well.
I think, I think they done fixed it though, you know what I mean?
Yeah, but I said the guy I just mentioned helped helping out, and he said, well, just whatever y'all decide.
Well, look here, if, if he's done fixed the pipe, he need to bring us whatever the quote is up here, for us to review that, and.
And we need to get him some sign, we need to get him some signs, or he need to get some signs, or who gets the sign?
At one point in time, they had some signs down there, I think they've all been given out, I ain't sure. But now, he, he's got, he gotta do better at marking it than what he's got here.
Well, I, well, I told him that, I told him it's gonna have to be marked.
You wanna handle it, or you want Doug to handle it, get him to get the quote up here, what it was?
It don't matter, I can call him, you want me to call him? You, you want me to, you, we gonna get him up some signs to put out there?
Yeah, they got signs down there, they just.
They got some.
Okay. Talk to him, get him to get us.
The invoice?
The, the quote on the thing, and, and we can see, you know, what we need to do about that. I mean, that'll be a starting point anyway. Alright, is there anything else we need to go over, with the department heads, or?
Um, that tractor, that, those tractor quotes, that's, that's for y'all to look at, like I said, he said he had.
We need to adopt that?
Yes, and, and.
The road ordinance.
Yeah, but Andy had said, he had talked to, talked to me and Mr. Allen about the, the mowers are so, so bad shape, they can barely keep.
So, this, so this, I'm gonna ask, this is.
This is updated.
This is a whole nother.
This is updated.
So, this ain't the one that we trying to get the USDA grant on, this is, this is, this is updated, right?
If, I mean, that's what I'm saying, if you guys wanted me to try to talk to the lady and see if we can amend that, and, and maybe.
What was it last time, I, I don't even remember what it was.
We did one tractor and one mower.
Yeah, this is, Andy needs two of them, because the mowers are just, they're packed beyond, they're coming apart, and they're.
So, does he need another tractor too, or does he just need another mower?
Yeah, he needs another tractor.
I'd say, I'd say Doug gonna have to talk to the lady to see, before we go any further with that.
We may have to just start over, and do, do two different ones.
Or just do what, or just do a separate one for this, you could just do a separate one for this.
Yeah, it may be, we may came a minute, so we just do a separate one, I'm just waiting to hear back from her.
Alright, let, let me run something by you, yeah. The mowers, and I done been around a bunch of this stuff, them big mowers, they ain't, they, I don't care, they ain't designed to mow stuff like that. And, and they, I don't, when I go to Bainbridge, I done seen them motor road a couple of times down there, and they got one big mower, and they got two little mowers. Them little mowers are maintenance free. I mean, they, they, when the tractor goes over a, a hill or whatever, the mower goes with it. Them other ones ain't doing it, they're digging in the dirt all the time, they hitting silver. And I, I want y'all to consider that right there, as doing something a little bit different, and I done, I done done enough of mowing. The right size tractor with the small mower, I could mow just as much as he's mowing with the big mower in a day, if you keep it moving. Uh, I done done a lot of mowing.
Well, one bigger problem they face down there is keeping people to run the stuff.
Well, what I'm getting at though, the man ain't, the man with the big mower ain't covering for the size of the mower, he ain't covering the ground, he need to cover in a day.
Well, it ain't covering but a foot more than a fourteen, you know, a ridge or what I call it. I think that's right, I think they're fif, and they're fifteen, and Batwing is fifteen feet, somewhere.
Something like that. But the, the mower that goes right behind the tractor, I mean, you just ain't, you ain't got the gearbox problems, you ain't got the wheel problems.
I would say let's buy a fourteen, one of those HX fourteen, one of them are Bushar or whatever, right up, you know, ridges, you know, I'm talking about, that don't fold up.
Well, I don't know, we gonna be any better off with that right there, 'cause it gets so wide that you gonna.
You talking about like a ten or twelve foot mower?
I'm talking about one that's about a, a seven foot mower, goes behind, straight behind the tractor. I mean, I would, I want y'all to consider it, think about it. 'Cause long time ago, when the convicts used to mow, they had mowers out there that were just, they was old, old mowers, and they never did nothing to them, except maybe change the bearings and the tail wheel, and change the blades on it, they never had the gearbox problem, and shaft problem, stuff like that right there, that they having with the big ones. But take that into consideration. What, alright, we didn't add this, is this just, is this something that, that wrote the, back, back up, the road ordinance? Do, do we need to add that to the agenda, 'cause it ain't?
Well, that's what we added, we added, um, we added it in the start of it.
Yeah, we had.
Okay, we got that on there.
Yeah, and what that is, that's the, the ordinance that you guys already approved, you know, we sent it to the lawyer. He, he was gonna put something there for timber, but he did, he just put the resolution wording on the top of it.
Alright, I didn't, I didn't write it down while I do that.
So, it's ready, all you have to do is just approve it, and then.
Alright, this is what we discussed in previous meetings.
Yes.
And if y'all alright with the thing, and you don't see anything, I mean, we can change it, if something comes up. Do I need to read this?
I would, 'cause it says you need to read it.
The whole thing, I got three pages.
I'm talking just that resolution part.
Is this the number of the resolution, twenty-two, twenty-two dash oh seven one one? Decimal oh, anyway, resolution of Board of Commissioners of Miller County, Georgia, providing an ordinance for the regulation of county roads in the unincorporated areas of Miller County, Georgia, to provide for enforcement therefore, and for penalties for failure to comply with the terms of the ordinance, and to repeal prior inconsistent resolutions and for other purposes. Be it so resolved to Board of Commissioners of Miller County in a duly, in a meeting duly assembled, that it is hereby resolved by the authority of the same to adopt, and ordinance of Miller County, Georgia is followed. And that's section one of Miller County adopts road ordinance. And it's got the different articles up here, just, unless I need to read this whole thing, and it's, they just.
It's several pages.
Several pages of it, is, is here for review, for the public, and, but it's, it's to, it addresses the problem, anybody doing anything without approval from the Board of Commissioners on the dirt road. So, we need a motion to approve it as presented, or I'll make it? And I'm gonna vote in favor of it also, so the motion's carried. Alright, anything else that we need to go over with any department heads or anything, before we go into closed session? Alright, need a motion to go into closed session, I'll make it.
Second.
Alright, I'll vote in favor of it also.